All right, well, we better get this show on the road so you can watch that game. So, welcome everybody to the Town of Long Beach Town Council meeting for January the 11th. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Through the minutes, we have the special Zoom meeting minutes from November the 25th. We don't have our last regular minutes. Right here, motion to approve those November 25th minutes?
I make a motion.
Now here, a second.
I'll second it.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, good, aye?
Aye.
That's three.
Aye.
Four, all right, it's unanimous, good. All right, opening remarks. I've got nothing. Police Department report, chief.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would like to start by saying Happy New Year and thank you again to everyone for the the choice in selecting me to serve the Town of Long Beach. I'm just very honored, very humbled to be a part of the team here in Long Beach. I'm looking forward to a lot of great things with the team within the town. So, I'm very appreciative of Chief Bob Sokowski for everything that he did for me in the past several months and allowing me to have the orientation last week with him was very, very helpful. Met a lot of great people in both the Town of Long Beach, Michiana, and Dunland, actually, all three towns. So, that was nice to have the chief doing those introductions for me. With that, last month in December, we had 68 calls for service. There were a total of 2,753 miles patrolled, traffic stops. We only had two traffic stops when speaking to the chief due to the COVID concerns. There was a little bit of reduction on that for traffic enforcement. We had five suspicious activity calls related to both vehicles and subjects. There were five ordinance violations that were looked into, six alarm calls, and three accident reports. We also had a call back on December 7th where we assisted the Michigan City Police Department with a shooting investigation where a female was shot on Highway 212 at the previous 212 bargaining center. Our deputy did an excellent job backing up Michigan City on the traffic stop where the suspect had fled from the earlier shooting. So, that was a great job of us backing them up. Last week and this week, I had some conversations with the building commissioner. And also, you have seen an email I sent out today where we're going to be assisting them in verification on building permits. So, we're going to do all we can to help the building commission. Lastly, just a couple in-house things over the weekend. I got the office all set up. I've started changing out some of our lighting in the building. I changed out 12 light fixtures over the weekend, putting in LED lighting to try and help with some of the utility costs in the building. My goal is to kind of make my way through the building and do some updates with the help of both Deanna and Bill. They've been helping me immensely since I've gotten started here. So, a big thank you to both Bill and Deanna for all their help as always. And then, next week, we'll be starting our in-service training, which is a state requirement for all of our officers, a minimum of 24 hours a year. We're going to obviously do more than that, but we'll be getting CPR recertification, TASER recertification, and then a few other mandatory classes that we'll be attending at the Michigan City Police Department. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Now, chief, we're very happy to have you on board. I understand that a couple of people in our police department have contracted COVID. And with that, we had a, oh, sorry, gotta let somebody in. We had a supplemental infectious disease control policy that we passed back at the beginning of this pandemic. And this was basically, I think it came from the state, and we basically ratified it. However, the state policy expired on December 31st. I think that our two members of police department who contracted COVID have been off, and that's been since after December 31st. I'd like to recommend to the Town Council that we extend that COVID supplemental infection-disease policy for at least another quarter. Basically, what it does is if you contract COVID, it gives you two extra weeks of vacation, 40 hours, 80 hours total, two, two, two weeks, 40 hours each. I think that's probably only the compassionate thing to do, but.
I second it.
Okay, so, motion, a second discussion?
No. Bob, I have a question for Mark. Who's doing the CPR training?
Officer Scott Combs with the Michigan City Police Department. He is a certified CPR instructor, so he is going to be recertifying everybody. It's an eight-hour course. I also wanted to share with John Wall, since he's the fire chief. I spoke to Scott Combs. John, if you have anybody that needs to be recertified, he said that possibly he could get some of your guys into the class too if needed, we would just have to talk to him.
Where's the class?
At the Michigan City Police Department in their training facility, there are two CPR classes each week, starting this week through the first week of March. So, there's plenty of opportunities to get people in. I think they're only allowing six people a day to attend the class.
Well, Mark, just keep this in the back of your mind. Bobby Petru, who was with the, she was with Red Cross. She and I are both certified to do that. I'm not sure if mine's up to date, but I would love to work with her again, and she's super at it. So, if we get shorthanded, she would be a good, a good link.
Good to know, thank you.
Okay, so, we had a motion.
Can I add one thing, Bob? The policy that exists currently that we passed includes two weeks of sick pay at full pay and an additional two weeks at two-thirds pay.
So, I don't, I reviewed it, Bill, I didn't see the extra two weeks.
Right here, I can, I can read it to.
Take a look, but it looked to me like that extra two weeks is if you're taking care of a family member.
Okay, okay, I thought it was, I thought it was, I thought it was required. Okay, then, 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 then I, I remove my comment.
Okay, so, we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, okay. Police Commission report, John?
Yeah, we did not hold a police commission meeting this month. Mark and I decided we're going to push it to February in the interest of him getting his feet on the ground. So, we really don't have anything other than what Mark's already reported as far as the police activity. So, we got it scheduled for early February, similar to what we've done in the past, but we decided to skip the January meeting.
Okay. Volunteer Fire Department report?
I'll give you the numbers for year-end here in two quick seconds. So, these will be year-end numbers. To date this year, fire calls, we had 50, and last year was 52. So, we're very on the mark, very close to the mark for this year as opposed, as in comparison to last year. Fire calls for December were down considerably. We had a hazardous condition call and a false alarm call. Year-to-date turnout on fire calls is nine per call with that many fire, or rather, false alarms. I can read the detail, I don't know if it's really that critical for year-end. Five fires, one trash fire, two brush fires, eight hazardous conditions. Those include gas leak, carbon dioxide, power lines down, three good intent calls, 31 false alarms. Our medical calls, we are at 84 this year. That's four over last year's 80 count. Those shakeout, in the month of December, we had four inju, I'm sorry, four sick persons and three lift assists. Annual numbers to date, two full arrests, five heart attacks, seven respiratory, 12 injuries, 23 sick people, one seizure, four unconscious victims, one possible suicide, and two vehicle accidents, along with, believe it or not, one, I'm reading this right, one drowning. 26 lift assists. Average number turnout on medical calls is six. Our average response time for the year is, on fire calls, is 4.5 minutes, and on medical calls, it's 4.3 minutes. So, that's the statistical report for the fire, for the year.
Okay. Any questions? Fire Commission report?
We did not hold a fire commission meeting. I will give you a little bit of information relative to what's going on for us. We're finishing up our annual proficiency test. That's a two-component test that includes some practical testing, which we've already done on all the apparatus and SCBA and some of the other equipment that we use on a regular basis. This evening, they're doing the written test, which is part of the overall test requirement. Our COVID protocols are still in place from the county. Mark's familiar with this, you know, we're following the county protocols in terms of calls that do involve COVID cases. The fire department was, and I'm sure the police department's in the same boat, we're on the healthcare provider initial vaccine list. So, most, many of our guys have already had them. I actually got my first one today because I was traveling last week, but I'll get my second one in February. So, quite a few of the firemen have already gotten vaccines. We're getting them down at Franciscan, and that's a great program. We will be entertaining, we, we, we had to postpone one of our meetings due to some travel conflicts last week. We will have a meeting too with the officers. We have a monthly officer meeting. We'll have a review of the, of the town contract and have that proposal for you for the February meeting. That'll involve hopefully an increase in the, in the overall dollar amount. We were at about 28 up until now. That's about an 11-year-old number. We'd like to get it up around 35, 38, somewhere in that neighborhood with the new contract. But we can review that when we present it to you guys. That's all I've got on the fire side. If anybody has any questions, let me know.
Street Department report, Tom?
For the past month, we've solved in cloud streets as needed. We're continuously checking out our trucks to make sure that they're always ready to go for the snow. We started kind of cleaning up around the shop, working on maintenance for all of our spring and summer equipment. And we don't really have a whole lot of other than that because we used a good portion of December to get in some vacation time while everything was quiet.
Deal.
And no snow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Street Commission report, John?
For much the same reason that Tom was incognito through December, trying to get set up for the snow. We did not have a street commission meeting this month. We'll probably set one up for next month.
This is going well, I like it. Park Board, John?
And I would follow John's point, no meetings, so, no reports.
How about the Community Center, John?
Same thing.
Wow, we're on a roll. Water Board, Mary Lou?
Okay, so, the Water Board met on December 28th. And just so you know, I know the problem, I know Dr. Lomay knows this, we're being audited by the state, which is okay with us, but then it's also triggered to, to audit the town. So, we're busy working on that. Just so you know, we've written to people about their, how much they owe, and you're, so far, no one has called because I'm in there on Thursday mornings. So, we're not, and our water department meeting, our president, Rick Blank, brought up the fact that, I guess at one time with the taxes with the county, he wasn't taxed the correct amount, but they only went back three years. So, that's what we're looking at, and that's what we're recommending because we can, we can actually say, okay, this is what you owe, instead of trying to go back on a certain person for 17 years or. But so far, no one's answered. We went through Chris Willoughby and who I know is on here now, and we're just waiting to hear back. I don't, I feel like the Maytag repairman, they're not going to call, so, we're going to have to be active with them. But, moving forward, they're being charged the correct amount.
Okay, and so, we have a limit on how long we wait for that response?
Well, you know what, we, by next meeting, I'll know. And I'm in there on Thursday mornings, and I will bird dog them and ask them, you know, where we're at. And I really think probably three years is fair. I know the lady on Northmore is more than willing, as Bill will tell you, to have some kind of thing, but the rest of them haven't called us. But I haven't given up, and we have a really super person in the water department, and I'm assured that she will handle it because she's had a couple cases that I didn't, we didn't have to write the letter to, and she explained it to them, and they're like, oh, okay, so, we, from now on, going forward, they're being charged. And, and it's been good, we're auditing that, it's probably gone on for a number of years. And we just want to make sure that everybody's, we're being fair and consistent. And so, our next, other than that, our next meeting is January 25th at 9:00 AM via Zoom. And everything's going good.
Good, okay, any questions? Budget and Finance, Bill?
We have had no meetings since the 12/28 meeting, but Pete Bybotes and I, I want to thank Pete because he has really been helpful. We did have a meeting at the suggestion of the council, and we reviewed our finances. And even though there's still some, some nervousness over, you know, what's going to happen in the future, we both agreed that had the money to, to have a, you know, to, to elicit a, a study from Haas. Hang on a minute, I just left. To have, to elicit, you know, to spend the money with Haas for the, for the study for the CCMG. So, that might, maybe I can solicit a, a motion if, if that serves the council to, to go forward with the study to see what kind of cost we would be able to, to be able to spend for, for the, for CCMG for 2021.
Well, I'd move that we go forward with it, so I'd make that motion. We investigate the cost for the study.
$35,000 cost, I believe, estimate that we got from Haas to finish the study. So, so that, okay, so, John Coker's made a motion, and you have a second?
How much did you say, Bill?
$35,000.
Okay, and then we get reimbursed.
We had the money for that, we still may have to evaluate that, but we felt like we're, we're comfortable with that expenditure.
And then it's three, we get reimbursed three to one?
No.
Not on that, that, that's just out of pocket. That allows us to apply for a three-to-one grant.
Okay.
And I guess the question is, do, are we going to have enough money to ask for a reasonable amount of money to get the three-to-one grant? And if we don't, we can't, this study also could be used six months down the road when, when maybe we are more able to do that, is that correct, Bill?
Yeah, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, all right, so, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye. All right.
All right, unanimous.
There is a Budget and Finance Committee meeting tomorrow at 8:30 AM.
Yep. Human Resources, Bill?
No meeting, and we've, for the issue of the, of the sick pay, so, that's fine. We have started, we, we have started to study as of today. All of the, that salary study that has been approved at an earlier meeting has been, has been, has been begun. And we have, we, I just heard from New Focus, so they're, they're underway with the study for, for the salary survey.
Okay. Any questions? Otherwise, Building Commission, that's me. We met on January the 8th. I'll hit the highlights. Permit for a seawall repair slash replacement was permitted at 3006 Lake Shore Drive. They had some issues where their seawall had buckled. They weren't actually able to put it in exactly the spot where the original seawall was. However, there was some concrete, a concrete seawall placed over the buckled seawall, and that's where the new seawall is going to go in. And the feeling was that what they're asking for met the criteria of the Coastal Protection Ordinance. We discussed an issue at 2300 Lake Shore Drive where there's a deck driveway built on town property. Our attorney is talking to their attorney, and hopefully, we'll come to some resolution of that issue, hopefully, in the near future, so that we can get going at, on the repairs, actually, on the revetment that's going to be placed at Stop 23. It's the property immediately to the east of Stop 23. We had an issue with paving excavating where a road was damaged, putting in a septic system. Also, permit was not, was not asked for until after they did the work. And Chris, I believe I forgot to tell you to write them a letter. The Building Commission decided to write them a letter saying if, if they do work again without a permit, their, what's the term, registration will be revoked. We want to give them some warning. So, Chris, if you could send them a letter, that would be great. Chris is the town attorney, in case anybody doesn't know. And then, the only other thing was, we talked about asking the police department to help in terms of enforcement of permits, and Mark's already addressed that, so we're good there. Any questions? Okay, next is the BZA report. BZA did not meet since our last meeting. Advisory Plan Commission did meet on 12/21. We discussed the proposed amendments to the Shoreline Protection Ordinance. That ordinance, we had an ordinance along with two amendments. They were combined into one, and then some changes were made to reflect some of the changes that have been made with the Army Corps of Engineers, and a few other changes were made. Those have been sent to the Advisory Plan Commission, which will take a look at those and decide if they want to make changes to that, hopefully, send it back to the Town Council. We discussed maximum building size ordinance was recommended from Building Commission that the town not allow any houses to be built greater than 3,500 square feet. That's not including the basement. The APC asked Chris Willoughby to check and see if indeed that's allowed, and he'll get back to us and let us know if the state allows us to do that. The idea being, we've got a lot of people combining lots, building huge houses, and I guess the question is, is that the kind of community we want to live in or not? Something to say for having housing stock that maybe young families would be able to afford. But we can decide how we want to go with that. Solar ordinance was discussed. We had a permit request to build a solar panel in a backyard. We did not have a solar ordinance, so we're trying to get that put together so we can decide what to do with that request. And finally, we looked at a right-of-way ordinance, and that again will be addressed at our next meeting. But there was some good discussion about that. Finally, Mike Gorman was reappointed as the APC representative to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And that was it, any questions?
So, how long, wait a minute. How long is Gorman? Because I remember that, but, so, what's his term, three years or?
It's a four-year term.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and of course, those other, we have some other positions on boards that are open. We wanted to let, we decided last meeting to let that wait until we had a replacement on the Town Council for Nick Meyer, and that'll come up later on down in the agenda because I think we need to decide what we're going to do with that. So, Bill, the building permit revenue report?
Building permit revenue report, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I've lost everybody but you, Bob. I mean, building revenue report for 2020, 20 permits totaling $885,776 with revenue of the town $9,935. 11, 11 electric permits issued in December, 1,843 was the total, $184.30 for the town. One November street cut permit for, for $100 of revenue. December legal expenses paid were $12,620.50, $2702.50 to Austin Kyprjusitis, $9,765 to Braji Nelson and James, and $153 to Night Hoppy, Kornick and Knight. Do we have a motion to accept the, the reports and the claims?
I make a motion to accept the claims and the permits.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All favor say aye?
Aye.
Good deal. Okay, unfinished business, we're moving right along. First thing we probably ought to discuss is, and it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to add it, and we need to discuss the procedure for replacing Nick Meyer on the Town Council. We've had six people who've sent me emails wanting to be considered for the position. They are Mike Johnston, Zach Neff, Anita Remigius, John Hostie, Dr. Stefanos Rizos, and Anna Wortman. Five of them have sent me CVs, which I've forwarded to the Town Council. I assume the sixth one will be coming. I guess first off, at some point, we need to decide that we're going to stop accepting applications. Any thoughts on that, Town Council members?
How about we stop maybe like Wednesday, and then, aren't we going to have a special meeting for something?
Well, we, just to start planning that, you, you need to do that, and then, you know, we need to give the council members a written notice of that meeting, even though it's, you guys are the ones setting it and the formalities of it. So, we really need to do that sooner than later, and that's a 10-day period, whenever you guys decide, but you, you really need to get that, that, that special meeting set and hold it for that purpose.
Okay.
So, Bob, did I, didn't you request like we do a special meeting for something? So, I thought maybe that could be in it?
Well, yeah, and, and we, I think we definitely need to have a special meeting for it, exactly. Yeah, I think that would be fine. We can't do executive, it has to be a public meeting, and that'll be fine.
Okay.
So, you've made a motion to stop accepting applications on Wednesday?
Let's make it Wednesday, just in case people watch the meeting tonight, and it gives them a couple days to get their resumes in.
I think that sounds fine.
Maybe update this website if it talks about, isn't there a message on there to invite applicants? So, maybe set the deadline on the website?
Yep.
Bob, do you want me to let Meg Collins know, or do you want?
Yeah, that'd be great, okay. If you, if you can let her know to put that on there that it's done on Wednesday?
Okay, and that's the 13th.
Yep, okay, and so then, and I will, of course, forward CVs that I get. And then, I guess the question is, is we schedule a special meeting, and Chris, that has to be 10 days out after notification, is that right?
Yeah, we, we need to have at least a 10-day, a minimum of 10 days. But, yeah, like I said, we really need to get going on setting that meeting.
All right.
Bob, when I tell Meg, let's make it like 5 o'clock on Wednesday, like the end of the day?
That'd be fine, sure. And then, we, we probably need to then, tonight, set a time for that meeting so that it can be posted. Anybody got their calendars handy?
Chris, 10 days out from today, or?
From Monday, Wednesday.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you need to have a minimum, you need to have a 10-day period from the notification to the Town Council.
Okay. From Wednesday?
No. Whenever we get it posted.
That's right, so, you could, if we, if we got notice out by Wednesday, which we could accomplish. I mean, what about Monday, the 25th? Does that give enough time? We could get.
And it's a Monday.
It's a Monday, does, um, okay, that's, that can work. Does Deanna have to put it in the paper?
Yeah, that's the posting.
Okay.
We gotta get a, we have to have a legal, a legal notice.
Okay.
Which we have plenty of time for that. The 10 days is ultimately, and again, it's, but it's to the Town Council. So, I will work with Bill to give the statute clearly required notice to the Town Council members. But I will work with Bill and help prepare that, but it really just sets date, time, which is, again, selection of a replacement, Council member.
Okay.
But Chris does.
I'll text Meg.
Excuse me, does that not have to be, does that have to be a legal notice in the legal notice paper, or does that have to be noticed just in the? Or does have to be noticed just in the around town?
We will do both, but I'll help I'll help you set both of those up, you and Deanna.
Okay, cool, all right.
We want to do that at seven PM?
Seven PM on the twenty fifth.
Yep. All right, let's go with that. Then I guess the next step is to decide what exactly we're going to do at this meeting. We've got six candidates at least. Do we want to have any kind of an interview process during this meeting? And and bear in mind, this is this is a public meeting, so it'll be like this meeting. And I guess we could ask the candidates to to tune in if we want to conduct interviews at that meeting. Your thoughts?
Other suggestion, as you guys are thinking about that, is is potentially just having a workshop. Via Zoom and invite them to that, which would be an open, open meeting or another. That you want to have tons of meetings, Zoom makes it a little bit easier under these times. So the week before, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, something before that Monday. So that that Monday meeting is strictly to to handle the business of that. Because, you know, six, six candidates might might take a while.
But that workshop has to be public also, right?
Anything you do is going to have to be public.
Yep. And so it would have to be noticed, have to be posted. So I guess, you know, if we call it a, we call have a workshop and a meeting or just a meeting and a vote at the end.
Or you could just, yeah, and set, you could set six o'clock for the workshop prior to and have each candidate. Give their spiel a little bit about themselves and have a little give and take from the council and.
I'm sorry. By our experience with the.
Like question and answers?
Judging by our experience with the police hiring, police chief hiring, I don't know, you're not going to knock out six candidates in an hour, I can tell you that. Do we want to make it a longer meeting that night or should we do two?
I would, I would look at it as similar to what we all had to do when we ran for office a year and so many months ago. You know, we were at a public forum, it was basically a debate or a discussion on what you want to call it. And wouldn't this be about the same thing? We'd have the five or six candidates get up there and they would tell a little bit about themselves like we all had to do. And then if anybody has any questions, we can ask them and have a time limit on everything.
I think we could do it in an hour and a half, because if we gave each of them five minutes. It's not like when we interviewed the police chief, because they, we had all kinds of questions for them. So I would think we could get get it accomplished and I'm pretty free whenever you guys want to have a meeting.
Want to move it up to six PM? That way we aren't going to get go past anybody's bedtime.
You know it.
All right, let's let's go at six PM then.
Okay, on what date?
The same date, the twenty fifth.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Yeah, and then at the end of that meeting, we can.
And if it runs over, is that public then too?
It it'll, it has to be public.
Then that's perfect. Then if it runs over, we're fine.
Okay, let's go six PM. Is everybody okay with that?
And that's the twenty fifth, which.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think we're good with that and I'll let you know.
Okay.
The candidates we have by then.
So just just to clarify then, what's the procedure? So we're going to do this dog and pony, everybody gets to say something and then we have to make a vote that night about who we want to accept. Is that how that works?
I think that's the way we should plan it. I think they could make a presentation of maybe, maybe give them two minutes or something. And then we can ask questions. And I guess we figure out, we can kind of wing that as we go. I guess they could all give a presentation. Probably not fair to to have make somebody go first and answer the questions. Maybe we kind of do kind of a. Everybody gives their presentation and then we kind of go around the horn with questions.
That's.
Kind of similar to what the League of Women Voters did.
Yes.
But then we we're going to vote that the four of us and then whoever, if we need Bill, then it'll be the four of us that'll vote that.
Yeah. That sounds good.
Is that legal, Chris? Is that how it's supposed to work?
Uh, it's really you, it is, this, it's within illegal parameters. There isn't anything.
I'd I'd prefer to have the interview process a different day than we have the vote.
We could do that.
Well, does the vote have to be public?
Yes, it's got to be public. Everything's got to be public.
So going back to Mr. Coker's, yeah, kind of like a candidate's form, right, in a workshop environment. And and maybe just throwing one other thing out there, I don't know that you want to have canned questions, but maybe you could circulate those amongst the candidates before then. You know, be prepared to discuss these or you want to come on the spot, whatever that is. You know, maybe just, I think we call it a workshop and it'd just be a candidate's form.
And so Chris, the the notification of us, that has to be ten days.
As for the twenty fifth, so that'll be.
So we really could have a workshop, so we really could meet at seven on the twenty fifth, just for the vote. And maybe meet anytime before that for this workshop where.
Just keep in mind, we have to have notice, public notice of that meeting, so forty eight hours at least. So yeah, it could be next Monday, it could be Wednesday, whatever you guys want. Well, it really can't be Monday, right? That's APC, so.
Yeah, but how about, how about like? Hey, Friday, Friday is not a big day during COVID. Friday evenings, everybody got big plans for Friday evening?
What what day, Bob?
The twenty second.
Oh, no, I'm free. So would that be like a workshop or?
Yeah, that would be, that would be the interview portion.
Oh, okay.
That'd be like the League of Women Voters thing.
Okay.
Does that sound okay to everybody?
Sure.
The only problem you might have would be getting the candidates all there on that night. We we ought to probably run it up the flagpole with them on a Friday night. I don't know. I mean, hopefully, hopefully they'll all be there, but you got some people working in Chicago and all that kind of stuff, so I don't know how that shakes out for them.
We could do Thursday if you want. I mean, that might be more free, although I don't know who's going out on Friday nights anymore.
Nobody.
I'm not so much worried about going out as I am getting home from work. I I know a couple of those, I read through those resumes, a couple of them are shy town employment. So I I don't know.
And Chris.
Let's run it up the flagpole and see if you can't, there's no sense doing it if we can't get most of them there. That's all I'm suggesting. I like John's idea about two sessions. I just think we want to make sure we get them all there. That's.
How about this? We have a special meeting on Wednesday. How about somebody between now and then contact them and see if they can make it?
Okay, so we're talking Wednesday, the twentieth?
No, no, we, you have a special meeting this Wednesday, right?
Right.
Oh, right, right, okay.
I'm saying between now and then, maybe somebody could contact those six candidates and confirm the date. And that way, then you still have plenty of time to set that that date, depending on what it is the following week.
All right, so I'll try and confirm some dates with them.
You know, ask if they need a weekend for that session or something. I don't know, but let's check with them. I like that idea.
Yeah, I guess we're all free on weekends too, for that matter. Why don't I see what the deal is? Everybody's pretty much free?
Right.
All right. Now you're not meeting on Monday, the twenty fifth.
No matter what.
Yeah, we're meeting on Monday, the the twenty fifth for sure, and that's going to be at seven PM.
Okay.
Yeah, that's happening and then I'll try and figure out a time when the candidates can hopefully all be there for this forum.
Okay.
We're talking Zoom on all of them, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and and Chris, the other question I had is as far as this on the twenty fifth. When we vote, so we have, say, we have six people. We have six candidates and if one candidate gets two and to get one, the one who gets two wins. Is that right? It's not like any kind of special voting between two or anything like that. It's, these are the candidates, whoever gets the most vote wins. Is that correct? I guess I'm just wondering procedurally how this works.
Or it's like Georgia where you have to get.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have a majority for a candidate, so.
It has to be a majority. Well, it's going to have, somebody's going to have to get three votes.
Yes, let me verify, but yes, I believe that's.
Okay, yeah, maybe just let us know how that works.
Yeah, that's, I I understand your point of the different candidates. But if if there's not, there isn't any exception for selecting a replacement. And generally, the the minimum is a majority of the elected council.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the procedure be, one of us would move to nominate candidate number three or whoever. And somebody would second it and or maybe if nobody seconded it, then that person is out. And somebody else make another motion. If that gets seconded, then you vote.
That's right. It's it's not going to be like an election where you have the top. Yeah, if they're multiple, that's right. It 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 is a majority.
Well, Chris, if it's two to two, isn't Bill the tiebreaker?
Yes, potentially the kingmaker, as they say, right?
Yeah, but but. But would, okay, the confusing for me is that, you know, having done the executive recruiting thing. Is that, is that I would love to have it down to two candidates. You know, where we'd have a vote with the four, you know, and but I don't know how to, I don't know how to accomplish that really and and to do it legally. That we we go from four to two and then we go with those two get. Get voted to, but maybe that's not possible.
It is not, even in the in the normal circumstance where you have an appointee, the best you could do is knock out one.
Yeah.
Okay, so Chris, you're going to check and see exactly procedurally how this has to work, right?
I I will confirm, but right now it is as John said, but I I will make sure that you guys have procedure wise. So going into that, you will be aware and prior to our, I I'll prepare a memo so that you can convey it to the candidates as well.
Thanks.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Town's executive order update. So right now, the community center, the the Y is open. The yoga classes are open with limitations.
Yes.
And otherwise, I think Jim Deaner's office is open, but he has just one client at a time. And I think that's pretty much how much we're open, right?
Julie Sosa is, has across the hall from Jim, has one client at a time.
Okay.
Always been able to operate. She gives everybody a, you know, a. Thermometer test and everything else before they come in and they're all and they work, they wear masks during the whole time. And she just gives one, one client at a time.
And Bob, I will report that the Y, because I'm there at probably six thirty in the morning, they take our temperature. I'm not inside there because I'm walking, but they come out and check on us. And then to make sure we have our mask on and at the most, I've seen three people in there at six thirty. So they're enforcing it.
Well, and I'm comfortable with that and frankly, I I don't think that we should drop our guard down at all. I think, I mean, I my biggest concern is, is it seems like a lot of people are getting more and more comfortable with three thousand people a day dying. And I think this would be a really bad time to, for us to fall into that.
Actually, the lady came out the other day and she said, I'm just checking on, there's just two of us walking and checking on the walkers. I said, because we're old. She said, no, to see if you have on your mask. I said, oh, no.
Oh, all right. Good deal. So anybody want to make any, I guess we need to update that executive order, right, Chris?
Um, no, because the council voted last time to extend that indefinitely after you have the ventilation fix, so you're good there.
Okay, so Bill, let's just leave that on the agenda for every meeting until hopefully this is over. And also, if you could, that that issue we had as far as the. Sick vacation, the the sick pay for people, we need to make sure that comes back at the end of the quarter.
Yep.
Since we extended it for the quarter. Sewer update, I think we're planning on putting sewers in come fall. I don't think anything has changed there, has it?
Well, moving on.
Okay.
That twenty four project is completed. There are some things that we have to do to make sure that the coastal grant people. That we've satisfied the requirements of the coastal grant. John?
I, the Save the Dunes lady is trying to schedule a meeting with me on Friday. She'll give us, give us an idea about exactly what the. The follow up needs to be, so I'll I'll be able to report back next meeting, but she, we couldn't put it together for this first week. But we'll have it, we'll supposedly have a meeting sometime in a couple of weeks.
Uh, John, when I drive by there, there's things new that look like. I, well, if you ever manufacture, it looks like we called them pigs. It looks like maybe they're stopping water flow or something. They're black.
They're sandbags.
Okay, but they're, okay, is that to stop the water from eroding?
Yeah, they were placed during the construction of the project and rather than pull them at the end, which we, they could have done. We wanted to leave them in there in the interest of slowing the flow from the water during the winter months. And then once the the vegetation has a chance to establish itself, which should happen in early spring, then we can pull them. So really, you know, we looked at it with Tom Dolph as well and he, the plows are able to keep away from it. It's just a better way to keep the erosion down while the the grass gets a chance to grow, the vegetation gets.
Okay, no, I I just noticed them yesterday and I'm like, oh, I wonder what those are. We put those around on oil based machines to keep the oil into the system instead of in the water.
Those are a little different, Mary Lou. What you're talking about are absorbent. These are not absorbent. They're strictly a flow through sort of thing. They let the water go through and they they keep the sediment back, so but it's, yeah.
So Stormwater Utility, we have a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday at seven PM.
Okay.
Yep, seven PM and and we've got, we've got both the ordinance for the, the second reading for the ordinance for the. For the formation of the Stormwater Utility and then the second reading of the ordinance for the fifteen dollar monthly charge. For owners of property in in Long Beach.
There was a request made, I think somewhere along the line, Bill, and I can't, I don't remember who talked about it. Maybe Mary Lou was going to do a little homework. Are, do we have enough room on the water bill to throw that on there? Are we going to be okay?
Uh, Lynn's looking at it with Civic, which is has the software system and we think we can get it on there. If not, on the Michigan City, when we get a, our bill for the sewage. Theirs is an eight and a half by eleven. If not, we may have to switch to that, but I think we can get it on there. Lynn's checking into it. And Lynn's the lady in the water department.
So once we pass this thing, we're able to start collecting. Bill, do you think the next, the following month? Is that how that works?
Yes, I I'm hoping so. So the sooner the faster. But I need need to announce the fact that we need to make sure that we need both Johns and a and a Mary Lou at that meeting. Because we only have four members and I think. Our our council president is going to be winging his way out of town.
I'll be there.
Okay.
John, are you going to be there too? John Coker?
On the.
Thirteenth.
Two days from now.
Good guess. Sounds like you got three, we're good.
John, there's not much going on Winamac. You can zoom in on us.
Hey, I'm still trying to make a living. Briefly, but.
Are you on fast time there or slow time?
Yeah, I'm I'm on fast time.
All right, you can fit us in then.
Okay.
Haven't missed a meeting all year.
I know.
Good. Uh, the proposed golf cart ordinance, I think we were going to set up a meeting between some council members. And the, and some representatives from the country club. I don't remember who was going to meet with country club.
Uh, I know I am and I mean, everybody's welcome. We we set it up with those guys at ten o'clock on the nineteenth. That's the the date right now. So, you know, and you're all welcome. Basically, they just wanted to present their points. Relative to the fees and anything else that was involved in registration for their people, that sort of thing.
John, did you, and you know, Mark helped us with some of that information too. Did you get the information I got from other communities?
Yeah, we did, Mary Lou, and it's strictly going to be up to us how we want to play those cards. I appreciate all your homework on that. I guess, I don't know if we want to discuss it now or you want to wait until after the the country club meeting. But, uh, you know, they they bristled a little bit at the magnitude that was suggested originally. And I don't know if that was, you know, cast in concrete. We just, I think that's the major sticking point. What do we want to charge?
So what times you're meeting on the nineteen? Is it on the website too?
Ten o'clock, I said.
It's ten o'clock on the nineteenth, Mary Lou. I I don't know that it's a public meeting per se.
Oh, oh, that's okay then. Oh, oh, that's okay then. I don't have to be.
Yeah, no. So the deal is is only two of us council members can be there. So we need to figure out which two it's gonna be.
I'm okay with.
If you want, Mary Lou, you want to be there, that's fine.
Uh let me see what I did some. Okay, then that's a Tuesday. I can do that. I did some. I did Michiana. Help me with this, John. I did Michiana. I did Grand Beach.
Chesterton.
Chesterton, and I reached out to a couple others on what they do and why they why they do it that way. So I'm I'm okay with that. And then I'm okay with whoever wants to be there because I copied everybody on the committee and I copied I think Brian Hogan and maybe Annette.
Okay, why don't you two do that and then you can report to us?
Okay, so John on the nineteenth?
Yeah, ten o'clock. Yeah, I'll just set up. I've got the capability to set up a Zoom. Mary Lou, we'll just do it that way, I guess.
Thank you.
I'll check with them and they 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 that was their preferred time and date, so.
Okay.
Good deal. Uh, tree ordinance, I think the Natural Resources Committee wanted to take that back and simplify their ordinance. The thought was that it was kind of creating quite a bureaucracy. John, you have something on that?
Just uh, Tom Dolphin, I had some conversation. I know Tom's still on here. We'd like a little bit more time to pound through that. There are some issues relative to procedure that Tom needs to be comfortable with. Uh, you know, right now, he would come to the council if there were any big issue. If we have another review by the by that committee and or the street commission. I mean, we we don't want it to become cumbersome. So and there's also some movement afoot to maybe get the town certified in some way. Bill's a little bit familiar with this. Although we're waiting until um things calm down after the end of the year, sorts of things with the accounting. But I think there may be some benefit to getting the town certified to a certain degree, and then maybe even Tom will get some credentials. And so there it's still a little bit of flux. I I don't want to antagonize the committee, but I think if we can have another month or so to get our feet firmly on the ground would be better to before we finalize it.
Good.
Are you talking about certification like a tree, town tree uh? Yeah, like Michigan City, Winamac, all these towns.
The the one that we
is I think they call it Tree City.
Yeah, I'm not. I I wish I could answer you more definitively, John. I think there's a certification of the town per se, and and I'm not sure if it's exactly what you're describing. A lot of those, some of these bigger towns have a hired arborist sort of a thing. I don't think we're going down that road.
No, you don't have to get a you don't have to. Just have one that you can call every now and then come in.
Actually.
Lady over in uh Chesterton, I think.
Tom wants to get certified as an arborist, and I'm encouraging him.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah.
In terms of the ordinance, we just have to kind of make sure we don't get too crazy with it. And I think the the committee did a great job. Really, it's only regulating the town, the trees on the town's property is all it regulates. And we just have to make sure we don't hamstring Tom and his efforts during the years, so.
Okay. Uh, volunteer fire department agreement.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier in the evening, uh, we we will have a meeting coming up in the next week or so. We hope to have not hope that we will have a presentation at our next council meeting of a proposed new contract. It won't vary too much from what we have. We're gonna be removing the Doonland language because we no longer cover them. And uh, basically, it'll involve the the projected increase in the annual commitment by the town to the fire department. Right now, we're at about twenty-eight in total, and we'd like to get it up a little bit because we lost the Doonland money. And also, it's an eleven year old contract, so.
Okay. Uh, C C M G twenty twenty-one application. We talked about uh how we were gonna go ahead and hire the engineers. Uh, is there anything more we need to do right now with that?
Do we have to have that application in by sometime this month?
It's late January, John, and I'll I'll check with Haas. I'm I'll try to check with Haas before the budget meeting. I think I can. I'll try to text him this evening. He's usually could have get about getting back to me. When I texted him after that last special meeting we had, he said, we may still have some time. I'm not sure if that window has closed or not, but before we go too much farther, I'll hopefully I'll have a something I can talk about at the budget finance tomorrow morning and and we'll figure out whether we can still still get it. I don't know if you've been paying attention, but Michigan City got into kind of a political bruhah over their C C M G application. Some of the people on the town or the city council didn't quite understand the process. They they thought they could pick and choose which streets. Basically, what happens is once you certify your streets to a certain level of of deterioration, then you have to use a kind of a very specific process to identify the ones you include in your application, and then you have to only do the ones you include in your applications.
Right. But I think there's still time, but the window's narrowing.
Well, it's not like you you put it together on Tuesday and
No, I know.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. Hopefully, he's still okay, because I want to say that he told me it was something on the order of January twenty ninth. So hopefully, he's
That's about right.
Okay. All right, uh, new business. I have none. Public comments. Anybody have public comments? Raise your hand. I'll look for you.
Bob, it's Anita Ramages.
Mm hmm. Yep.
Twenty-three hundred Floramine in Long Beach. Number one, just to clarify the park board, um, combined our November, December meeting, and we had it November thirtieth. So technically, we did hold a December meeting. Um, my second question is, I only heard six, five of the six names um, running for who have submitted information, Zach Neff, me, Anna Bortman, Mike Johnstone, and Mr. Rizby. I didn't hear the sixth one.
No, not Mr. Rizby. Mr. Rizby didn't did not apply. Mike.
Both.
Mike Johnstone, Zach Neff, Anita Ramages, John Hussey, Dr. Stefanos Rizos, and Anna Bortman.
Okay, um, will the town council meet prior to um what you're talking about a candidate's forum to talk about disqualifying anybody? Whether it's due to litigation or the fact that they were involved in a prior um election? And
Yeah, I don't think any of those things are disqualifying.
And my other question is, I I'm a little, I I don't under, I I guess maybe this is for Chris, that we have to have a public forum, but I don't understand why questions wouldn't be submitted. And if the council are the ones making the decision anyhow, what's the point of a public candidate forum?
Well, the the town council can't meet in private. We 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 there's public, what's the word for it, Chris? The there's a lot.
Yeah, open door laws.
Open, open door law, yeah.
And
So if there's a concern about giving a question and what the order would be, wouldn't it make sense to submit a couple of questions to the candidates and answer them at the public forum? I mean, does it have to be opened? I I understand it's public, but um that's just a comment.
Well, I think
And I'm sorry, Chris.
Oh, I was gonna say, I think ultimately the council is trying to take the fact of being as transparent and open as possible and kind of handling it, but a little bit more of an expedited way that each of them went through in the process. So but you know, ultimately doing it in a public forum i- is required. Uh, so there's no getting from that.
It just seems to me that it would be fair if the questions were given to the candidates and where they were able to answer ahead of time. And my next comment is um I I might caution or it's just my personal opinion, but watching the many, many council meetings that I've attended and watching particularly on Zoom, it might be who um council members to watch a meeting after it's over and to maybe temper themselves in terms of interruptions and um it it might be just something that the can that the council members might want to do because the the council meeting sometimes can be very, very disjointed. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments?
Hi, Donna Kavanaugh here. Can you hear me?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Um, if you give me a few minutes, I have a couple of comments and a question. So first of all, um is Mark Yagelski still there? Mark, are you still there?
Mark, I'm here. I'm here, Donna.
Okay, I, on behalf of all of the citizens I've talked to of Long Beach, we're so happy that and we want to welcome you to the police department here. Um, and I'm I've been asked to speak for many people that are full timers because, as you know, uh, I was on the twenty nineteen Michigan City Citizens Police Academy. I graduated a year ago. Unfortunately, because of the COVID, they're not doing it in twenty twenty. It was a wonderful experience, and you spearheaded that. I learned a lot from you and we're very grateful that the town council has chosen you as a replacement for Bob Sotowski, who we we really appreciate his service. So I wanted to make that comment. Uh, thank you, Mark. And also yeah, okay. And the second thing is that um I do really uh appreciate what the town council has been doing. I tried to get on um last month uh to thank you for your service during this very difficult time. Uh, I've been a full timer here off and on since nineteen fifty-six, when I was three years old. And I have to tell you, I've seen a lot of changes in Long Beach in this area. But I'm very grateful to all of you that have put your time in. Um, and I I appreciate that. And then the last thing I wanted to say to you, well, one more comment. Um, I wa- I started the Michigan City Tree Board, and then I was brought up by the governor to be on the state board, uh, which has now been disbanded because of funds. If the tree board needs any of my um help uh with their uh, putting their their ordinances, et cetera, together and to find out how to become a Tree City USA, et cetera, I'd be happy to help them. And finally, my question to the town council, um living at Stop Twenty-One is heartbreaking. Uh, we are the the one stop that's the I feel like we're in a war zone. I know what you're doing, uh, because I also spotlighted it last year uh, to help save the uh, Lake Shore Drive part going into Avondale. But can you tell me, I've been watching the progress. I give all of the people working on that a lot of chops. It's very difficult. Can you tell me all of those steel pieces that are going down on our beach? Are they going to be there forever? Is it temporary? Uh, can you give me an idea of what's happening? And thank you very much. I'll sit back and listen.
Go ahead, John.
As far as steel pieces, um Donna, the only steel, it's all been a rev- a revetment. So there's stone revetment, and then this modular revetment that's been placed down there. Um, if you're referring to the steel sheet piling wall to the west, which is on the private owner, that will be pulled. That was the design. After the revetment went in, they were gonna pull the old steel wall. So that's a great improvement in terms of the public access uh beach, so to speak, because that once that wall's pulled, it'll be considerably farther landward than it was before. In terms of right to Stop Twenty-One, what we've what we've done is we've introduced some steel H sections as vertical members. I think there are three of them down there. And they idea they will support a stairway for public access. There's you can't, we've had limited success trying to put wood stairs in at the stops. They float away and you can't adhere them to anything. So we decided to put some vertical steel piles in so that we can attach stairs to them, much similar to what's going on at twenty-six and some of the other stops. So that's what those steel members are for. They're they're just strictly for the stairs and for the future stair installation.
Thank you for that. I uh, I've been watching closely. I brought some sandwiches down to some of the guys. I I just really uh feel like it's very heartbreaking. I'll just say this to other people who may be listening uh to this on TV or uh later on. Uh, Stop Twenty-One was always the most desirable stock to buy a house because you could run a mile before you hit the water. So it's just really shocking to me at this stage in my life to see this, but I am optimistic. I've seen it happen at least three times in my lifetime where the water recedes and the beach comes back. So, John, thank you for that. I'm very uh I'm very hopeful, and I appreciate all the work that they're doing uh on behalf of all of us here at Stop Twenty-One. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any council comments? Claims approval, Bill.
Number one, seven, seven, six, eight through one, seven, seven, nine, six. Checks totaling one hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and one cent.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Bob.
Good night, everybody. Hope your team wins.
Thanks.
Want to know what the score is? I know.
Morning, Bill.
Good morning, Bob.
Morning, Bob.
Morning, Mark.
Good morning.
So, Mark, yeah, as far as that business with the building permits, if your guy just calls Lou Mellon, uh, I think that then Lou can take it from there.
Okay, yeah, that'd be wonderful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've got it. I have not have not met Lou yet, so I look forward to meeting him.
Uh, do you have contact information for him?
Uh, I do not. I have Larry Wall shared his information with me. I just need um Lou Mellon's if somebody can send.
I'll send it to you right now, yeah.
I'll give it to you this morning. I just
You're gonna do it, Bill? Bill, did you say you're gonna do it? Okay, all right.
Yes, yes, I'll take care of it. I got it on my phone. It's
No problem.
Thanks, Bill.
That way, we won't bombard you with it. Hey, we did pretty good that meeting last night. That was pretty quick.
Yeah.
Was okay.
All right, you got a writing stick, Mark?
I'm sorry?
You got a writing stick in front of you?
No, why is that?
All E's, N E L L E N. It's two, one, nine, two, two, nine, nine, zero, nine, one.
Oh, here, you know what? Let me let me just send you the contact. That'll be easier.
Okay, then I'll just save it to the iPhone then.
Yeah, yeah, he'll that way he'll just have it on his phone.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, John, that um CPR training that Michigan City's doing, is there any chance you think you might need some of that for your guys? Or you guys all good on CPR? Oh, you're on mute, John.
We're generally up to speed. We, you know, we we that's part of our recurring training, but I'll check with my uh, medical guy and make sure there is there aren't any stragglers that didn't make the last training. I appreciate the opportunity.
No, they offered it. And like I said, um, I think they want to, you know, help as much as they can with both police and fire. They've got the certified trainers, so it works out great for us, so.
And you guys are American heart. I know Mary Lou was talking about Red Cross. We're generally American heart. I don't know how you guys.
Yeah, actually, we gotta go through the whole uh first aid and CPR. It's a full eight hour refresher, so.
Okay.
Good luck with your vaccine. My arms was a little bit sore for three days.
Yeah, I'm feeling it. I'm feeling it this morning. Yesterday was okay. This morning's a little rougher.
Yeah, it lasts about three days. Other than that, no side effects. Everything was good.
The way it's been waking up every couple hours makes sure I'm alive.
I'm gonna go ahead.
Small this, I couldn't believe how small the syringe was.
No.
Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is.
Make you, makes you realize how easy it is for those Russians to poison somebody.
Yeah.
Yeah, they only have to stick you. Pretty made.
Franciscan did a nice job. Well, they have a, a great system out there. They move you through really quick and, uh, I was very pleased with it.
That's good to hear.
I'm glad to hear we're gonna be able to get the second dose. They've already scheduled, I'm sure they did with you guys too, but.
Yeah.
The way the national press is talking, they're gonna dilute it down and just do one or something that doesn't sound, sound right.
No.
Yeah, it's kinda taken a unnecessary chance, especially since they're having trouble giving the vaccine that they've got, you know? That, that seems kinda nuts to me, but hey, what do I know? Cool, well, I got 8:30, so, um, Peter, you on here? I see his name. Ask to unmute. I'm gonna ask to unmute.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, okay. So who, who's, who's running this meeting? They can start anytime.
Okay, this is Pete. Uh, we spent most of the time here talking about what we talked about last time, which was where do we stand financially? I sent everybody, um, a, um, email that talked, that showed a cash flow analysis and with some verbiage along with that. Just to summarize what's going on here and how this all ties together. The cash, the cash, first of all, every month, the, uh, at a council meeting, the, uh, financials for that month are printed and presented to council members. And that is by fund. Everything in the state of Indiana is run by fund. General Fund, MVH, that sort of thing. And the purpose of the financials is to give a picture of what has occurred in the previous month. It also contains a year-to-date figure. That's responsibility of the council, that any, it's available to anybody who wants to see it. The reason that, that I did this analysis based on cash, because cash is king. Um, you don't get to develop any budgets if you don't have enough cash coming in or in the house. Every year, as you know, the budget starts somewhere around, uh, June. Technically, it's complete by the end of August for final review and that sort of stuff. And, and usually has to be done somewhere October, November, that it has to be signed off, submitted, posted, all that kinda stuff. But the reason cash is important is that, uh, you start with a balance of cash in your account. And if you don't have the, uh, tax receipts or the sales tax receipts or the, um, various receipts that show up, that cash balance is not replenished. For a town like Long Beach, there is no, uh, real way to enhance the taxes, the tax receipts. Uh, there's no licensing fees, there's nothing of that nature that, that the town can manage. So the town really reside, drives primarily by, um, uh, tax receipts. And, and, and the memo I sent, it gave you an example of how important tax receipts are for like the general fund. Uh, the general fund is impacted every year about, uh, fifty, fifty to fifty-five percent of the money that comes into the general fund, uh, is the result of property tax receipts. Uh, and the general fund is the major fund, is the one that has the most latitude, the ability to spend in any way that the council sees fit. MVH Park and CCD are the other three funds that are, um, supported by taxes. Uh, they're more heavily supported by taxes. Those three are in the vicinity of anywhere from ninety to ninety-nine percent supported by tax receipts. So any impact on the tax receipts has a great, uh, impact on what the town can spend now and in the future. In discussions with Carl, uh, certainly for this year, uh, for the 2020 year, even though there was COVID, uh, there was not a great impact on the tax receipts that we saw. Um, we're just about where we usually are with tax receipts. How that will be impacted in 21 is uncertain, although it doesn't seem like it's as bad as I had originally thought. Because if, if we're in a relatively affluent community and, uh, as long as people continue to pay their taxes, we're okay. But that has to be watched carefully. There's two tax receipts, um, that are sent, that are sent by the county each year. One around June, one around, uh, mid-December. We can continue to call the, um, county people, uh, to see if there's any problem with, uh, tax receipts that are behind or not being paid. But frankly, they're not very helpful and, and they don't, they just don't compile a lot of different information. But we keep trying. So in effect, um, what I did in the, on the spreadsheet is talk about how cash is managed in the town, uh, and where we sit. And if you have that, that, um, spreadsheet in front of you, for example, at the end of the year, in the general fund, we had, uh, $419,000 in cash. In total, for all of the funds, that's riverboat, MVH, uh, local road and streets, um, parks, that sort of stuff, we had about $3,500,000 in cash. Now, that, that, that's the money that starts you off during the year. So that, um, is constantly replenished, as I said, like the general fund, MVH, Park and CCD, which is the capital development fund. You get two, two, uh, installments each year of money that comes in via tax receipts. The key is, um, obviously the budget that's prepared. And the, it, it, cash is, is the starting point for every budget. You, uh, in, in this year, for example, in 2020, I should say, uh, the town ran a, an annual deficit on their bud- receipts and budgets of about $110,000. And, and some would say, well, you can't be spending more than you, you take in. Well, the purpose of these funds is that they're bank accounts. They're your savings accounts. So when we start out with $419,000 in cash, um, if we spend in that account, just in that account, if we were to spend $25,000 more than we took in, we would end up with $369,000 in cash at the end of the year. So what you see on the spreadsheet on the general 101, we start with 419. This is an estimate for, uh, to get to 2021 balances on, on the right-hand column. We say, alright, based on the budgets that we have in place, if we start out with $419,000, estimate that we'll receive receipts of about a million one. And, um, we, we, we have budgeted, uh, disbursements of a million seven, a million seventy-one thousand. We should end up with a cash balance of 446. That's good. I mean, we're, and it's not to say we can't spend more than, than a hundred thousand. We can never go below zero on the, on the cash account, cause that's what's in the bank. So you can't do it. And it, obviously you have to adhere to the budgets that you set, um, during the, during the budget process. That's what the Department of Local Government Finance, uh, sits on and watches. That's how they set it up. So as long as we're getting receipts in as we expect and we spend as we expect, we will end up with a cash, uh, an appropriate cash balance at the end of the year. The reason that we have, and we, we're in good shape, I mean, as of, as of now, we're in good shape, uh, for municipality. If you go around and look at the municipalities around the state, you'll find that, um, we're in excellent financial condition at this point in time. But that doesn't mean that we can't be, uh, we can't be, uh, hurt by foolish spending or some lack of receipts. So if you look at the general fund, once again, we start with 419. Uh, we spend about, as we, as budgeted, we spend, uh, spend about 20,000 less than we take in. We'll end up with a balance of about 446. Okay, that's, that's basically what this first block on the spreadsheet shows. Over in the other, on the, and carrying that forward, let's talk about a few of the things that are in there. Uh, in the cash, you'll see about halfway down, we see the GO, the GO bond for, uh, that's fund number 212. We secured a bond of a million dollars. Forty-one thousand are there, had to go for, uh, print interest on the bond that is set up. Uh, so we're left to spend with 959,000. Now, that item sits on our balance sheet, basically. That's what this is, a balance sheet. And now during 2021, when we, when we, um, pay that, you can see that we did not be budget that receipt, any, any additional receipts. And we didn't budget any disbursements in that, mainly because there was no, uh, we had no idea what we were going to spend for the protection. The GO bond is for the stops. So we have $959,000 in the bank. We know that we're gonna spend that. Because, uh, I think we've already identified that we've got about $350,000 into Stop 23. We've got Stop 21 to go, which will be probably a little bit more than that, maybe thirty percent more than that. Um, so that 959 is gonna be spent one way or another. So that's how it works. In addition to the GO bond, you can see down, we have, we have the garbage fund. Garbage fund is really not, not really has to do with the town finances. It's just a collection that, that goes through. So if you look over in the square, um, just to the right there, these are the items that are, have, will either be carried forward to next year. For example, we didn't spend them. Uh, and these are called, some of these, like Reese Riley, is an encumbrance. An encumbrance means you anticipated spending it, but you didn't. So in effect, you've got an artificially high amount of cash. It's sitting in the bank, it's in our bank, but we never incurred the exp- the actual physical expense of paying the bill to Reese Riley. So you can see the next item down, the stops 21, 23 and 29, that was 970,000. So this box over here are the things that are gonna be coming out of cash that may, that were not, uh, anticipated or they were not paid during 2021. And these are going to, uh, reduce the cash. So where we started out with an estimated $3,468,000, um, for the things that were on the books, the estimated cash balance, you can see we start with that. Now we start taking away those things that were encumbered. In other words, they were not, they were not spent in, uh, 2020. So 750,000 is gonna come out, 970,000 comes out. We, we had to pay the additional GO bond interest of thirty-two, we will be paying that of 32,000. That was not anticipated. Uh, and then it starts with assumptions that I put in here because in our various discussions in the budget committee meeting, these are things that have been talked about, uh, that people wanna spend or have instituted, but they were never budgeted. A salary survey was not budgeted. Uh, but it has been, um, initiated. Six, that's $16,000 worth of cash that's gonna come out. The next one is, is if there is a salary adjustment, an employee salary adjustment. I took a guess at, at, I said maybe three percent. Uh, that will, that will hit the books at about $30,000. The next one, property tax COVID impact. I, I was being, just putting something in here to say, I do think there will be some, um, impact of, uh, lack of, lack of tax receipts. So I put a $50,000 estimate. We had a squad car. Um, a deal came up and we have an opportunity to get two squad cars for something, but there's $40,000 that we never budgeted for. That's there. We have pipes going in at seventeen. Um, I don't know what that's gonna cost. Forty-five thousand. Building permits, uh, reduced revenue. This year, we took in about $156,000 in building permits. Uh, that's been, that was quite a bit more than we've ever taken in before. So I just said, we'll probably take in 25,000 less this year. Riverboat, that's the one that's been, that hit the most. Typically, on a year, we would get a hun- or a, a close to $100,000, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars from the riverboat, um, fund. But this year, we only took in about 47,000. And our last payment, our first payment was 28, and our last payment was about 17 or 14 or something like that. Uh, I, I, I anticipate that that's probably gonna be 60,000 less because it isn't gonna get any better with the riverboat that I, that I can see when I drive by. Legal expense reduction, I added 20,000 back because we'd spent a lot and I, we're, we're, seemed to be, uh, on a down, on the upward or downward slope for legal resp- expense reduction that we are going to, uh, probably spend less. We're getting a CARES Act reimbursement of $37,000. Uh, that was not anticipated or put into the budget. So that, that now is, uh, I added that back. The hydrant expense reduction in, in 2020, it was in there. This year, it's not gonna be in there. So I added back 38,000. Engineering fees, this, this engineering fees has to do with, um, additional, uh, look at, look see at, uh, paving grants. Um, every time we do a paving grant, um, it costs us money for engineering fees which are not covered. And then, of course, uh, we have additional fees if we did actually take the grant. Uh, additional shore protection. Uh, I, I don't know, it seems, seems like I, I've got, I didn't update something here. But, uh, that should be 200,000. I don't know why I've got that in here. But, uh, this is the money that we, uh, uh, could be spending, could be spending for, uh, more shore protection. And, and, and of course, anybody who has any, wants to change any of these or throw anything in or take anything out, let me know. Um, the, the conquer that was not identified is, the next one here is the, um, the SRF escrow for sewers. The entire sewer project, uh, in order to get the SRF funding, uh, now requires us to put a $300,000, chunk of change away, which covers both the interest, one year's interest and one year's principal repayment, uh, for the, um, uh, the sewer project. Uh, there was an excavator talked about, uh, desired. I took out 80,000. If, if we don't buy that excavator, that 80,000 goes in. So net-net, what we've got is, uh, at the end of the, all of this, uh, there's a substantial number of unbudgeted items. But remember, the first two are ones that, over on the left side, there's, there's a total sitting, you know, we got our money from, um, the, the state for the, the community crossing grant of about 787 or something like that. We've got about 750 left to pay and stops 21, 23 and 29, those are, um, uh, covered by the GO bond. So, but, but we still have to, um, oh, I know, I know why that additional shore protection is 200,000. That's, we have to start paying back the 200,000 for the, the GO bond. Uh, additional shore protection down there is 200,000. So we'll be, it's a five-year deal, uh, close to a million dollars. So net-net, we'll be paying back $200,000 a year, uh, for additional shore protection. That was, that was on budget. So what you see then, when you come down to the bottom, or this is the estimated cash balance as of, um, 1231, 2021, if all those column, items on the right are pro- are correct and all of the receipts on the left are, are as, as, um, as projected. So that's what, this is what has to be managed. This is the purpose of putting out the, the financials each month for people to look and see what they wanna do. Are we, uh, incurring any unusual variances to budget or not? So, and, and I will, just a couple of asides, what I wanna make sure everybody understands is that the town is limited in its, um, in its ability to incur debt. Uh, we, we have the ability to take, uh, about $3 million in debt, of which we've covered at least a million dollars with the GO bond. So there's, it is sources of funds that we could tap into if it was necessary. But the repercussions from that have to be, um, have to be, uh, we have to be aware of them. For example, if we're talking. For example, if we're talking about another community crossing grant fund, and we were to go to full boat of a million dollars, and we wanted to get the million dollar grant or a million thirty three, we would have to put up two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand dollars worth of money, we have to pay that to get the, to get the grant. So, that is not included in here. So, we have to keep in mind, it's nice to want to spend stuff, it's nice to want to do things. And a community crossing grant, not in the budget, would require changes, obviously, to reappropriations of things, hearings, that, that manner of stuff. So, that's, that's the impact of all of this. The lesson with grants is that every time you do a grant, it costs us money unless it's a total hundred percent grant, of which we've never been able to qualify for anything like that. So, having said that, and the last thing I'll say is that, just as a matter of course, and I think IACT, not IACT, but yeah, IACT, when you go to the IACT sessions, and it's prudent, they recommend to keep maybe, you know, half of your budget, or three to six months of your operating expenses in cash, in case something comes up. And in the past, you know, let's talk about what might come up. We've got an old community center. We've got a heating cooling system in there that, although the Three Amigos have kept that thing running and going, if something catastrophic were to happen to that, we would have to repair it. And immediately, you're probably, is something drastic, when you're in the hundred thousand dollar range. So that's why you have to keep an appropriate balance to handle any kind of emergency. Could be, you know, it could be repairs to a truck, repairs to a front loader, that sort of stuff. All those things are extremely expensive to do. We try to keep an amount in the account that's, that supports that, but still need to keep an operating balance. It's up to the council to decide, how much do they want, what do they want to do? But typically, we've tried to keep, we, we've never had any trouble keeping a sufficient operating balance. But as you can see from the box on the right, we're starting to get, we're very close to with a million forty five in the bank at the end, this is, this is town money, not, not including garbage, not including water, not including those things, just plain town money. There's a substantial amount of, of concern for that, but that's, that's up to the council to figure that out. Are there any general questions?
Pete, I've got a couple. On the unbudgeted cash receipts and disbursements, basically, the, the items that we can influence, I was just curious about a couple of things. It, it seems to me that on your, okay, so starting at the top. Bill, I know we've made some payments on the CCMG. Is seven fifty the, the what we've got left, is that legit, or?
That's, it's a little, it's a little more than that. I, I gave Pete that number and we, I didn't correct it, but, I mean, it's, it's eight hundred and thirty four thousand dollars still to come. I think we're fine with, with, with Haas, but we've only paid a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. And, and the, and the contract was for one point oh four million. So, the math says that we got eight hundred and thirty thousand more to pay. Got, after I paid off Haas, you know, it's going to be about two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. It's budgeted and we can pay it, but it's two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars more out than in. In other words, once, because once we expel all that money from, from, from the, from, from number two twelve or two fifteen, I guess, which it is, you know, then, then we're, then we have to pay for it out of, you know, and we budgeted it. That was that, that, that additional appropriation thing, which will, will now be, you know, be passed forward to twenty twenty one. But as Pete described it, it's, you know, regardless of whether it's budgeted or not, it's two hundred and eighty four thousand dollars more than we have in the bank, so.
So, so basically.
So I've got a few other, I've got a few other questions. The slide twenty one and twenty three, right now, we're at about a half a mil on twenty one, which hopefully, maybe a little less. Twenty three will be three fifty, so that's eight fifty. I don't see, and, and that's a, that stop twenty three will be a not to exceed. Twenty nine, we have not made a decision to invest anything in twenty nine yet. There's talk about it, we haven't finalized that. There, there's a chance, a good chance, I believe, that we'll be under that nine seventy, but that's just conjecture, and I, I don't want to press the point. The GO bond, that was a five-year commitment, I didn't see the documents, so that, that was always to be a five-year commitment. Pete told me that yesterday, I didn't realize that.
Yes, it's, okay, twenty one.
We, did we influence that term, or that was dictated by them?
That was dictated by the bond itself, yeah, yeah.
But I mean, yeah, so.
So it's going to affect the taxpayer.
Yeah, I got that general statement, Bill, but I'm, I'm just curious as to how it got to be five years. I didn't know when we started that process that it was that short of a term. But, but that was, that's the way that has to be, I guess?
Yes, yes.
We didn't choose that ourselves, okay.
Yeah.
When I, when I come down, you know, obviously, some of these things, the RISVIP pipes, that's, there's no way to know what that'll be. We, we, right now, we haven't committed to anything on that. But I think it's wise to keep something in there. The riverboat, Pete, I'm a little confused. Over on your revenue on your twenty twenty one receipts column, you've knocked that down to thirty, thirty thousand. And then you also take a sixty thousand dollar hit over here on the unbudgeted. I almost think that's redundant in a way. You, you've made that adjustment over on your revenues for twenty twenty one, you've knocked it down to thirty, and then you also take sixty out over here, I think, full counting, isn't it?
You may be right, you may be right.
Okay.
I'll check that out, I think you are.
As I, as I march down through here, the one other thing, that funding reserve, I know I asked a question, and I don't know if you've heard back from Carl, but is there any way we can do a payment bond, or he hasn't answered back yet?
I've not heard back yet.
You know, just for everybody else's benefit, in my industry, when you have a payment commitment, you can get a bond from a binding company that says, yes, if you default, don't pay it, the binding company will pay it. And that would involve considerably less outlay than this three hundred. And I don't know if municipalities could even do that.
Or do I, that's why I've asked Carl.
Yeah, I think that's worth investigating. Couple other little things. You know, stop twenty four's revenue, I don't believe is reflected in here, is it, Bill? We, we're expecting a hundred thousand from them, we've already shelved out.
That is correct, it, it is, you know, it's paid for. I don't see any more invoices there, so, so that would be a plus one hundred thousand, assuming that we get the whole grant.
Right, and then assuming that we're able to float the, or not float, but to initiate the stormwater fund, that'll be another hundred and eighty thousand dollar positive impact to our cash through the year if we, if we do in February through December. So there's two eighty there, and if this, if my double counting on the sixty is correct, Pete, then you got about three forty there that's not reflected, that's a positive impact on what we're doing. If you take your nine hundred thousand, roughly speaking of surplus based on these numbers that you've shown us, and put that three forty on there, you know, you're up around a million two. So, again, I, I'm not trying to discount what you're giving us, and I appreciate it very much, all the efforts. I think.
No, and, and that's good, that's what's supposed to be done. That's, that's what the purpose of doing this is for, to develop as clear a picture possible of where we are.
Right.
Now, let me, let's talk about the stormwater fund. Is, is that going to be purely a revenue?
Well, right now, the things that we wanted to, our justification for coming up with a stormwater fee were a couple of things. One was, we've got all these brand new storm structures from the CCMG money, in addition to all the other storm structures that need help during the year. So we thought we needed to get one of these hydro excavators, that's what you're showing us, your eighty thousand dollar expenditure on your, your unbudgeted dispersments. The other issue is that we've always got continuing stormwater situations, including the RISVIP situation, where we're, we're not doing, correct, we're not doing the right thing. So we're putting stormwater into the lake that's untreated, and we're, we're dealing with puddles all over the place and some street improvements that need to happen relative to stormwater. So that's why we wanted to have some revenue to offset some of those expenses that we typically had to take out of the street budget or wherever Bill was, was able to try to come up with some funding for those kinds of things. But times, it's kind of a whack-a-mole sort of thing. Tom's been forced, Tom Dolz has been forced to do things on a shoestring sometimes, when if we had some money in the bank specifically for stormwater, we could do some, you know, some better project type things. There are lots of private, semi quasi-private public stormwater lines that go down to the lake, similar to RISVs that really need to be corrected. So, so that's what the motivation was for that. And, and in terms of whether it's totally revenue, Pete, in this particular year, if we look at fifteen dollars a month times eleven hundred households, times twelve months, you're looking at about a hundred and eighty in receipts, a hundred and eighty thousand, and I'm just showing that as a receipt because, simply because you've showed that excavator is a negative. So, I, I look at that one eighty as generally would be in addition to what we're looking at here.
And, and I think, from what you say, it sounds right, the question would be the timing. When, is this something that would be collected on the tax bill? Is this something that would be collected on the water bill?
Well, we're going to use, right now, the, the proposal is to have the water bills starting in February.
Yeah.
So I think that one eighty is a realistic number, if that's what we're able to do. We're, the water department's trying to figure out whether they can do it on the water bill as it's currently printed, but if we're able to, then it'll just be a fifteen dollar hit on the water bill every month for everybody.
And, and what, so what is the, the legal basis of this? Is this, is this something that has to be approved by some legal entity, like somebody at the state? Or is this something we could just, is this a valid utility fee?
Listen in tomorrow night, Pete, because we're, basically, what, what we've got is a second reading of the approval of the ordinance to form a stormwater utility and, and the second reading of the ordinance to set the fee at fifteen dollars. So the, the meeting, we have the notice made, it into the paper, so we're, so we, we will have a, a public hearing and then succeeded by the reading of those two ordinances. And, you know, and then that will be a legal stormwater utility. And it is a, it is a state. There are other stormwater utilities, but I think we, I think Carl borrowed some of the wording from, from other municipalities to, to make our stormwater utility.
Okay, so, so what I'm getting at, in, in effect, that's money, that's current money we'll be collecting this year, and we'll be able to spend this year.
That's correct.
Okay.
But just, just to reiterate what Bill's saying, you know, we did a little homework on this thing and found out we're able to do this. It's similar to the Water Board in some respects. It's, it's, we're going to, we're going to use the town council as the board. We're not initiating a new board, and there won't be any board payments to board members or any of that sort of thing. So, anything we bring in, we'll be able to use to, to.
Okay, that's good, I'll, I'll adjust all this.
One thing that, that for everybody, I, you know, to me, I'd rather be conservative on the, on the riverboat. You know, we did collect, I think, fifty six thousand dollars this year. But, you know, who knows what's going to happen next year? So that, that money was usually just a tad over a hundred thousand dollars. It just magically appeared twice a year in June and December, so.
Right, and, and the only caveat is that our last, our first payment was thirty eight, and the last payment was seventeen, indicating a tremendous drop off in their money.
So, again, again, but I think you're double counting there, you, you.
No, no.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, okay.
I'm just, double counting might not be bad, if you could, but I, I agree with what John is saying, but.
Yeah, I agree, that's, that's, I'm glad.
In general, then, just, you know, again, I'm relatively green and apologize for some of these things that I'm asking, but, you know, to have, let's say my numbers are right, and we're adding a three forty onto your nine, Pete, you're about one million two. So that's cash reserves at the end of twenty twenty one, assuming everything that we've, we've talked about, and adjusted by what I discussed. And, and obviously, things can happen that can increase or decrease that. You mentioned in your cover letter to the information you sent to us that, you know, we want to always have at a minimum, I think you said six hundred or something was what, maybe the LG.
Yeah, that, that's the number I used.
But, but if we're, if we anticipate a million three, or, I mean, I, I don't know what the historical for the town is going way back, but in my mind, if I've got a two million dollar budget and I've got a million three in the bank, I'm not doing too bad. So I, I don't think this is doom and gloom from what I'm looking at unless we get some major impacts that we're not foreseeing.
Right, you're exactly right, and we, we, you know, we, we decided to keep a hefty cash balance for something like storm protection. You know, here we had a million dollars off the top that we have to, we have to allow for. So those, that, if somebody wants to have less, that's fine. All we're trying to do is present a position and an idea, and it's up to the council to decide what they want to do.
One of the things, Pete, that I, I, I thought about afterwards was that it may turn out that the twenty five thousand dollars that you've removed from revenue on the, on the building permits might be too lo, I mean, it, it might, it might shrink in a, to a greater degree than what we've had. I mean, we did, we did have to put more expense in because Larry was, you know, living on the, on the lake during the time where we were trying to save houses and everything else. But, you know, so his expenses went up also. But, you know, my, my feeling on it is, is in prior years, we had, we hadn't even touched a hundred thousand dollars in, in building permit revenue. So it may turn out that, that we have to rethink that again.
And I, I agree, you're, you're very right, and that, that's why you, you supply on a monthly basis the monthly financials, and that's where it can be tracked, how much is being spent in each of the items.
So, one thing Pete and I discussed, Bill, and I know you and he have discussed this as well. When we get our monthly cash reports, we don't show the positives in the budget column so that the variances make sense. And, and I don't know how difficult that is, and I know this, I know you're.
No, it's fine, I, this is, that, that, I told Pete that we'll, we'll, we'll get on that. From a management point of view, you know, it's harder, I mean, I don't see, we don't manage very well the revenue because I, you know, and so it, it didn't, it doesn't seem as important to me as the expense side. But if, if, you know, we can, we can do all of that, so it's not, not something that has to be. I mean, typically, you know, whether we're going to get nine thousand dollars worth of building permit fees or not, I have little control over that, but if, if it's helpful to the council, then that's, that's fine. Nobody has asked for it before, but you have, and so we'll do it.
Well, I, I, I don't want to be a problem for you. I, I think if we're, if we're going to try to, if we, if we make the conscious decision that our reserves at the end of twenty twenty one will be somewhere around a million, or a million three, or whatever it winds up at, and we're nervous about that, then I think it's, it proves, it, it probably does us well to try to keep track of it, at least on a quarterly or something, so that.
No, no, it's, it's difficult to do, it's, we can do it, so that's fine.
Yeah, particularly when, after the, after the tax receipts come in, then, then at least, you know, we're able to say, okay, our presumptions on, or our assumptions on impacts to revenue based on COVID and everything else, then we've got a good handle on it, we can make better decisions.
I, I don't disagree, so I'm fine with that.
Pete, can I, can I, can I ask one question, Pete?
Sure.
On, I just wanted to get clarity in my head, with that GoFundMe bond, isn't that all, all going to be paid back by the real estate taxes through the citizens? So, will we have an expense, or am I not understanding that?
No, the, the GO bond is us. That's coming out of our, it's not being paid back, it's coming out of the operating funds, put it that way.
But we're, then what, what was the, the, the bond or something that we did that was supposed to be coming out of the real estate taxes, that was an addition to the real estate tax?
Joe, they're going to be, you know. Joe, they're, they're gonna be, you know, just like we had when, when, when we started this saga, we were getting five pieces on our, on our receipts. General, MVH Park and CCD and the repayment of the bond for the town hall. And that got paid off in twenty sixteen. And so since twenty sixteen, we're going to be getting the four pieces. And starting in twenty twenty-one, we'll start taxing people. And so we'll again, it may, it may not appear any different. I mean, it may, it may increase your taxes, but it may not appear any different on your tax bill. But I will be getting, you know, I'll be receiving from, from La Porte County, a five-piece check instead of a four-piece check.
But will, will that be extra money for the town?
No, it would just be repaying that million dollars that is going out the window when we are paying whoever's fixing up our shoreline.
Look, that's, I'm sorry. That's what I was just asking, that, that money will be extra money to the town to pay off the fixing of, of the bus stops. Correct?
Yes.
Joe, it's an in and out sort of thing. If you were looking at the spreadsheet, you'd understand it better. There, the money's in the budget as a revenue item based on the bond proceeds and it's in the budget for an expenditure based on our rough estimates of what we're gonna spend on the lakefront. So it's an in and out sort of thing.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's what I was thinking. I was just trying to make sure I grasp that because I see Pete on the, on the other side, on the right side, he has an additional minus two hundred. And I don't know where the, if that would be an extra two hundred.
That's the payment. So you've got an annual payment, Joe. We're on a five-year payment.
Right.
That's what, that's what Pete's showing there. Not only.
But, but the, but the pay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for being so stupid, but the payment is definitely gonna come out of the real estate taxes from the, the, the town. Correct? I mean, it seems to me that if we're collecting real estate taxes for this GoFundMe bond, are we collecting a hundred percent of the million, use the million dollars? Eventually we'll collect a hundred percent of the million dollars? So therefore, the town through the real estate taxes is paying for the GoFundMe bond. Is that, is that a way to say it or are you saying that?
It, it won't, it won't come out of real estate taxes. And I don't believe it'll hit twenty twenty-one because of the way we, it, it won't be on the tax bill this year. It might be.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was twenty-two. I, I forgot we changed years. So it's twenty twenty-two is when we start.
And, and that's because we have all this stuff of, how, how do you phrase it? Pay this year for last year or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
So like, we're gonna be reestablishing the CCD fund, which will generate twenty-five thousand dollars more a year. But when we reestablish it, although we do it in first half of twenty-one, it won't hit the tax bill still twenty-two. So, so that's the reason. In future years, it'll be better, Joe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey Pete, one quick question for you. At one point, if I'm not mistaken, there were some correspondence that went flying around about whether the hydrant rental should be rather than a, a user fee, that it should be on the taxes. Do you recall that conversation?
Uh, yeah, I do. And I thought it was gonna be on the, on the water bill.
That's, that's the intent right now is to be on the water bill, but I thought there was some concern that maybe it needed to be on the taxes in lieu of on the water bill. I can't remember.
I've not heard anything about that.
Um, what I recall on that situation is that if in fact we put it on the tax bill, you'd have to wait, you know, a year and a half or two years for the town to be reimbursed because how they do that. So we felt on the water bill, you'd get your money right away.
No, that makes sense. I, I just, I didn't know if there was some requirement that it was on the taxes. If it's not, it doesn't bother me.
No, it was just, you know, a cash flow item, I guess. We'll get our money sooner. The town will get its money sooner by putting it on the water bill.
Yeah. And the idea behind that and the stormwater is that we're able, that, those are the only ways. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but that's the only way we can get any additional revenue with the, with the caps and the circuit breakers, right?
And, yeah, unless we break into houses. Yeah, so I think we're okay. So yeah, no, I mean, that's it.
Please keep listening to you, Bill.
You know, I, it's more, more computer thing, but if they do find the line that, that Mary Lou said they were searching for at the last night's council meeting to put the fifteen-dollar stormwater utility fee on there, I'm hoping that if we pass the, the hydrant charge also that it could, could go from, you know, from fifteen to twenty or whatever it is and it could still be one line just saying, I mean, we can, we can break it out and put it into the, you know, the system could break out and put it into the separate funds, but.
Well, I don't think we can do that because the water department keeps the hydrant fee and the town gets reimbursed for the storm. I think it has to be two separate lines.
So it doesn't really matter though, because, because then it just stays in. So then you just keep the money and it stays. And I'm just saying that, that if we have a problem with just printing a, you know, a post, a postcard, we, we don't need two lines. We, uh, because you mean, you don't care how the, how the system breaks down. I mean, right now, when you write a check, some of it goes for reimbursement for the town, for the, for the water employees' payroll and some of the money goes into, goes into the garbage fund.
While we're on the subject of the water bill, Laurel, I think you told me at one point that the, the bond or the, the long-term payment for the water improvements that were made a few years back was going to uh end in twenty twenty-seven, is that what you told me?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay.
And just a small thing, um, I see in the engineering fees, we have twenty thousand dollars. I think last night we decided to spend thirty-five thousand. So that, that probably needs to be changed. I, I do think that this is a good discussion that we probably need to have on a quarterly basis. Probably the best way to do that is to have that discussion at, at this meeting quarterly and then for us to send a report to the town council. That way the town council can, you know, base their decisions on expenditures based on their philosophy as to how much they think we ought to have in our cash balance. And related to, does that sound reasonable to everybody? Uh, I think that's probably, and then you had said sixty percent of revenues is what we probably, is what they recommend as cash balance. And so I, on the revenues, uh, in terms of the, on our budget, the total budget is how much, as, as we have listed, I don't see a total there. Do we, do we have a total for that? Just to get some idea of, and I know, I know we're not sure whether that balance is nine hundred and eight or, uh, one point two million. But I guess, so we, we would basically add up twenty twenty-one receipts, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one budget. And that sixty percent of that is what we ought to have for cash. Is that what HAM is recommending? Or IACT or whatever they call themselves?
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, just looking at the list of funds here, of course, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to maintain it for garbage. We wouldn't have to maintain it for this new stormwater thing. Uh, that sort of stuff. So I, I'll just make a quick estimate.
If you, if you run those columns, Bob, just for your info, that twenty twenty-one receipts column adds up to two million one roughly and your disbursements for twenty twenty-one adds up to, um, roughly two million one as well. So it's kind of a balance. I guess you could say it's almost balanced in terms of disbursements and receipts according to these projections. Here, for the whole year for twenty twenty-one. We don't have a big deficit. The way I see it, we don't have a big deficit projected for the outlays for the year, with the exception of these optional things over there to the right that Pete's talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I'll redo this spreadsheet and send it out. Okay.
I guess the comfort level on the one million in the bank is what we, the council needs to talk about, Bob.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right. You know, everybody's got a philosophy as to how much money they want to have in the bank. And so.
Right. And also I think talking with Carl is to learn what our, uh, debt ratio should be. Um, I know that's something with the water department. Since we really don't have assets, we have to keep our bank accounts at a certain level for our debt ratio.
Do those, do those water department balances figure into what we're talking about at all, Pete? I, I, I I know I asked, uh, Mary Lou got me the budget for the, you know, the projected budget for the year for the water department, but as far as cash balances that they have and then, um, debt that they have, do those figure into what we're talking about? Should the council be aware of those and be talking about those in conjunction with what we're doing on these numbers?
Well, yeah, but, but they should be, they're separate from this. They're not, they're not merged. The town, the town's monies and the water department's monies aren't separate. There are different, um, requirements for the water department. And those probably should be reviewed. Um, balances are for, balances are in the water department, which are some I consider pretty hefty. Uh, balances are supposed to only be maintained for operating expenses and, and, uh, any kind of balance necessary to support debt. So and where that number, where that percentage is, um, somebody's gonna have to look at that, but.
Yeah, Carl, just recently, we talked about that and, um, he was feeling comfortable where our, where we were at for our debt ratio.
I guess the point is, should the council be aware of it all in conjunction? If, if we're, if we're making this decision about whether we're comfortable with a million, a million two or whatever it winds up at, should we also be taking a look at the water balances so we understand it and we can put an imprimatur on it or put our stamp on it as well? I, I get, I know that there's a separation between the two entities, but I also somewhat feel that the council ought to be a little more aware of what's going on, just so we're we're all in the same boat together there.
I, I, I think it's very well to do that. Um, I think equally important or maybe more important is on the town side. Uh, the council, each council member has to be more involved in what's going on in the budget and understanding and reviewing the expenses that come out each month. That, that, that's just a key thing because, uh, one account that gets out of whack, I mean, a couple of years ago, the legal stuff got, got out of joint, but fortunately we had enough monies in the bank to cover it all. So the important thing is to understand this process. Appreciate the fact that cash is king in the world of municipalities and that we only have a limited debt ability to take on debt. You know, with, with the Go bond, we're, we've eaten into a million fortunate, for, for many years, we had no, we had no debt at all, um, other than paying back for the town hall. And, uh, so that, that's basically a lesson that everybody needs to, to take to heart. Understand those financials.
Do you think that water department debt is, needs to be included in that calculation on the town's overall debt?
No, it's not.
It's separate.
It's, it, it's totally separate. It's all looked at as water department and town.
Maybe the way to handle this as far as educating the town council is, you know, we have these quarterly meetings where we discuss this. And maybe instead of a report, maybe the town council ought to just watch a recording of this meeting. Then they would be, you know, and they'd have a copy of, of, of this document that we have here, the spreadsheet. And that, and then any questions they have, they could, you know, address to Bill or Pete or John, somebody who understands these things better than I do.
I, I agree. Anything they can do to understand what's going on, that's, that's better for everybody.
Bill, would you anticipate being able to talk, I, I, I know revenues only come in infrequently. Would it be better to do a quarterly budget review than monthly? Would that ease your situation a little bit?
No, I, I think, I think the, the court review would be, would be, would be good. I mean, we're, we're gonna enter into the system because that's what we have. And I, I think it would be more confusing not to, we're gonna enter, you know, the revenue is gonna be the annual revenue that we're expecting. So you're right. I don't think it's as meaningful during a month by month. I think quarterly, but quarterly is, would be meaningful. So, yeah, I, I think, I think that's, that's the way to go. So.
You know what?
Do you suggest it, Bob?
Yeah, what I would, what I would suggest is why don't I send an email, I'm gonna send Pete's spreadsheet to the two town council members who are not here along with suggesting that they watch the recording of this meeting. Uh, and so they can have a good understanding of where the budget's at. We can, that, that process starts now. Uh, it'll get a little more cumbersome when we can't do Zoom meetings, but at least for right now, let's take advantage of the fact that we've got the Zoom.
And, and also refer to the, you know, the year, the year-end, uh, twenty twenties, um, financials. You know, that, that's where the game starts. Um, and I'll just repeat that typically all of the funds, um, funds that come in from these different sources are, are typically very close every year. And that even from, even from, um, real estate tax. So it, it, understanding what happened in two twenty twenty is important to see what's gonna happen in twenty twenty-one. Plus the exceptional items that we talked about here.
And those year-end financials, Pete, you sent out also?
Uh, Bill sent them out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's the same ones that he sends to the council, the, the year-end stuff.
Yeah. And I, I did send out the, uh, the gateway system, which I will be entering into the, into the civic system, which would be a little more easy to to read. I think you're more familiar with that. So, yeah, so we'll get that.
And, and it, it's worthwhile too, for, for everybody to look at the gateway, the access to the gateway system. Um, the, but for example, you get to look at what other communities are spending. You can look at any community in La Porte County. You can look at any, um, uh, financial unit. You can look at salaries for individuals, total compensation for everybody in the, in, in the town as well as any other town. It's just very worthwhile to take a, a tour of what's available in that system. Um, the expenditures, the, and, and begin to read about the financial structure that, that drives the state. The state itself, we complain about DLGF, but the state itself is fiscally sound. And, uh, there are reserves and there are quirks in it, but basically it's a good, it's a good system and there's money available um, for different programs. CCG has been wonderful for the town. We were very fortunate to be able to participate in two rounds of that. So, uh, any other questions on this?
One thing, just, just for future reference, I mean, we, we'll have to make a decision, assuming Haas is able to get the CCMG application in on time and, and we get an award. That'll be part of that first quarter discussion. We'll have to decide what, if any, we want to spend if, if we did get an award. And that'll be, you know, determined, the amount will be determined by where we feel we are after that first quarter adjustment on revenues and.
Right. And that, uh, now remember, the, the real estate taxes come in in June and December. So we won't be getting another, um, chunk of real estate tax until June. And it, and it's important to keep track of, uh, it's, that's why somebody like Carl is, is important to identify what, what is the tax receipt situation at the county level. All I can say.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, this past year, and, and I think in the last two, two CCMG evolutions, we, we've not expended the, the funds until basically the fourth quarter. Isn't that correct, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we would have to authorize the bidding process midsummer, Pete. By then we'd know we were, at least we'd know where we were at with June receipts, I would think. And then, you know, then we'd have to make that decision about how much to spend out of the award, assuming there is one.
That's a good point. Very good point. Timing is everything.
One, one question on CCMG, uh, just for your, remember, John, and I don't, and I should, because that was one of the things that I thought was the fabulous thing we did the first year getting into that three for one. Don't we have to decide how many streets we're gonna do by the, we finish this? I mean, if we're submitting something by the end of, of January, don't we have to pick how much we're asking for? Because I think that's the way we did it before. So.
That's what, that's what, that's what the expenditure to Haas is, Bill, and. And, you know, keep in mind, they've already done quite a bit of the homework. In other words, when the initial survey of the streets, that money's already been expended and that work has already been done. So now what they do is, you know, you, for lack of a better term, you you rate them one to five or something. Your worst one being one, your best ones being fives. I don't know if that's the right ordinal. But anyway, you know, you you do your, they won't let you do your your fives until you've done your ones, let's say, okay? So he makes the list for this application this year with whatever's left. If they're all the ones are done, then we go to twos. And then we're able to choose, pick and choose how much of that we spend come June. So his projection will probably be in that million dollar range again. And then if they award us that much, we can say, okay, we're only going to do 300,000 of it. So that's our choice. And and then we have to give back whatever money we don't spend.
John, does does the crack seal function? Is that covered under, what you call it, under?
I've I've not seen it used in CCMG arena, Pete. I will tell you from a from a practical standpoint, it's not a very good solution. There's a lot of technical reasons why it's not a good solution. I I think I'd rather see us spend 300,000 and not try to do something on the cheap. Crack seal is a is a very short term. It's it's designed for certain applications. It basically just, it's like a paint job. It's not
I understand that, but but one of the recommendations when we went through, and and maybe I read it wrong. One of the recommendations went through when we did the first CCM or the CCG program was that after we paved, after we paved four miles, the next year and years following, we should immediately be doing crack seal. That's what I'm talking about. I know it's not for the old roads. I know that's no good. But so I you you're the road expert, just
The luxury of getting the kind of dollars we've gotten is that we've been doing a better application. We've done two layers of asphalt in most of these applications, which is unheard of. Usually, Tom would just do a resurface. And and we've milled down, which we didn't do, you know, 10 years ago. We just used to overlay roads. That's why a lot of times you have ponds and puddles and things off the edges of the roads because we weren't able to afford doing it correctly. With the CCMG money, we've we've done a much better job in terms of engineering and application, which means you really wouldn't need crack filling when you put a tool lift application down. We've actually also used a better product. We, you know, when when Walsh and Kelly got it that two years ago, we engineered through Haas's efforts and 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 Walsh and Kelly's, we engineered the product to use what's called polymer asphalt, which is much better for the application that we have here in our town with the ups and downs and the way the streets are. So so we anticipate not having to need something like crack filling, first of all, as opposed to a regular, just a quick one and a half inch overlay sort of a thing. So I, we can look at it, Pete. I I wouldn't get too concerned about, you know, the timing of it, uh, the cost of that product, you know, over a phased in sort of a thing, we can probably handle on our own without the CCMG. I I'd advise to use the CCMG the way we've been using it. And then if we decide we need to do any crack film, we'll we'll keep an eye on those things. Uh, but I don't I don't anticipate needing it anytime soon, and I wouldn't want to use those dollars for that right now.
That that's excellent. There's nothing like having an expert involved in this stuff. Okay. All right. I I I don't know what other things we can talk about on the on the topic list. Does anybody have any particular topics they want to bring up?
Uh, one thing I did want to mention, you know, we're we're going to present to the town council in February a new fire department contract, since the revenues from Dunland are gone. And the contract that we're under currently is about the over 10 years old. We're going to propose an increase in the the town's expenditure to the fire department. Right now, we're at 28 a year, 28,000. We make 7,000, four, 7,000 our quarterly payments. We'd like to see that bump up to somewhere between 35 and 40. So that has to be discussed with the town council, but that'd be an anticipatory sort of thing for the budget finance if that passes.
Okay, well, that as you, as everybody's aware, that would add to the right hand column on this spreadsheet. So those are the kind. Now, let me also state that it it's very important that we have a a very structured budget process when we go into start the 2022 budget process. And that means everybody needs to understand what the potential pitfalls are in in the budget process. And the pitfalls are, as you can see here on that spreadsheet I sent, the pitfalls are out on the right. Those are the things that we have to be aware of. And Laurel usually handles the police department, works with the the chief or the marshal, whatever we call it. John, you'd be working with MVH. We need, if if this community center needs any kind of capital or any kind of improvements, those have to be added. So it it's just, it's just keep keep the antenna up for that kind of stuff. And people have to be assigned to the process. Okay.
Quick, one quick, one one last quick comment. I'm sorry. The water hydrant, I know Laurel, we had originally talked about having a separate hearing about that water hydrant fee, 250 or whatever was going to be a month on the water bill. Do we need to incorporate that on this hearing on tomorrow night or can we? Or is it too late? Or do we need to even worry about that at this point?
Well, it was my understanding that Carl was going to do both public hearings at one time.
Well, that's not possible. We, you know,
Okay.
We have to announce, I mean, unless unless there's another both, the meeting tomorrow was announced as a public hearing and there is no mention of of hydrants in the in that. So we got, so it's got to be a separate issue and it's got to go in the paper and it's got to be
Okay, I'll get I'll get in touch with Carl.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, can we make sure that happens? Because we've been talking about this for quite a while.
Right. I'll call him today.
Yeah.
So we just need to schedule another hearing, right, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, yes. It's, you know, it's not that big of, with Zoom, it doesn't, it's almost easier assemble a group, you know, and everything. So, yeah, but, yeah, we have to
In regard to hearings, I'll be working with Carl to upgrade to reestablish the 5% rate on CCD. And that will require another hearing. But that's not scheduled. We've got to get the whole process done by April 1. So there'll be something going on first quarter.
And then maybe combine those two hearings?
That I don't know.
Ask Carl.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm done. Everybody have a good week.
All right.
Thanks, guys.